Good evening. All right, I think it's quieting down. In accordance with the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting has been appropriately advertised. Welcome to the special Tuesday edition of our September Board Meeting. Roll call, please. Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Mello is absent. Ms. Rivera?
Here.
Mrs. Severino?
Here.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Bowman is absent. Mrs. Caden? Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, the one nation under God, in whose law the liberty is just as strong.
A quick announcement that more agendas are being printed as we speak, so you can wait a couple of minutes to get them if you are here and don't have one. Also, you can find it online in the meantime. There is no executive session at this time, so we're moving to Section Three Presentations. Why don't we switch the order of them? So, we're going to do, we're going to have Ms. McPartland do our Into Math program presentation to wait on our final student rep.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Jemic Partland, and I am Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And this evening, I am going to review a new program for our district, K-5 Elementary Math, and it's called Into Math. So, the first question was, why did we need a new program? We actually had a few reasons, one of which is we have new math standards that we have been incorporating into our math curriculum over the past several years since they were initially adopted. And also because we had a contract with Go Math for several years, and that contract expired last year. So, that was the impetus for having a new program. We also had another component called Imagine Math, and this was our platform for benchmark and ongoing assessment with students. Imagine Math had a lot of great components and a lot of highlights, and there were some pitfalls. And the greatest struggle was actually that they were two separate entities. So, this year, we decided to go through a process of developing a committee, or I should say, last year, developing a committee so that we could highlight some of the programs that were out there and see which one would work best for our district. Our math committee was comprised of teachers in Collingswood and Oakland, and we had classroom teachers, special education teachers, learning acceleration specialists, and elementary supervisors and principals as part of the selection process. These are the programs that were reviewed. There were five in total. And overwhelmingly, the committee chose Into Math for several reasons, and I'm going to go into some highlights. So, first of all, there was a notable alignment to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Math. There was a STEM connection embedded in the program, which was a highlight for our new STEM focus throughout the district and in accordance with the science standards. There were opportunities for connection to visible learning, which is a concept that we have been studying throughout our district for several years now. Student learning tensions and success criteria are part of visible learning language, and those were embedded in the Into Math program. Student empowerment of learning was another really critical component that we used in terms of selecting this program. There's goal-setting opportunities and ownership for growth from the students as early as kindergarten. So, this was a highlight for us. Many opportunities for student collaboration. There was a connection for SEL also included in the program. And then, there's multiple opportunities for differentiation. As part of the process, Into Math has several components to lesson design, and you can see them here. I want to highlight the differentiation options, small group, independent practice, and math centers that allow us to have multiple opportunities to meet student needs throughout the course of the day, the math time, that is. And the small group particularly because we have multiple opportunities for flexible grouping. So, this was important for us in terms of selecting a program. Finally, in terms of assessment and differentiation, there's an Into Math Growth Measure Assessment. This actually connects back to what I was saying earlier about Imagine Math. There was no opportunity to make a connection to the math program we were teaching with our assessment. So, it was a little disconnected at times, and the teachers definitely made the best of what we had available to us at the time. But this alignment between the program and the assessment piece has really strengthened the approach in terms of our math instruction. We will be able to have an analysis of standards at each grade level to determine where are areas of strength, where are areas of challenge, and where can we continue to develop. Those standards reports, as well as the growth measure, will be extremely important as we go through professional learning community discussions within grade level and department teams. Each student will have an opportunity to participate in individual learning pathways through a platform called WAGL. So, students will take an initial assessment, and then, they will be assigned their own pathway for learning based on that, which will address their individual learning needs, any skill considerations, not only for areas of strength, but also areas of concern and that need to be developed. And then, throughout the program, as I mentioned, there's small group instruction support that really is at the hands of teachers. It does take the guesswork out of planning for multiple students in multiple levels in the classroom and really allows them to make sure that they're targeting every student's individual needs. And, of course, teacher and family support was another highlight of the program. So, in terms of teaching and learning, there's an actual platform for teachers to use that has at-your-own-paced learning modules and live virtual training sessions. We began this school year with the second component, which is professional learning. And on coaching will be ongoing through HMH. So, professional learning started this year with getting to know some of the coaches who will be available to us. And throughout this school year, the company has organized for ongoing professional support with coaches from the company, and that will be in each individual elementary school. There are school home letters that can be used to support learning at home and each individual module and lesson. So, there's an overview of what's happening in each module and what will take place throughout the module, otherwise known as a chapter. And finally, there are Math On Spot videos, and these are additional support mechanisms for you at home when you're working with your child in terms of the lesson that they've had during the day, so this provides that support for them. And that is all.
Sure. Just had two quick questions. The first was, you mentioned the SEL connection. Can you speak more about that? And if it's not something that's fully fleshed out, just like, just so we have some sort of an understanding?
Sure. At the beginning of each module and unit, there are suggestions for how to provide ongoing support for those SEL standards and competencies that we are pretty familiar with. So, they have offered suggestions to teachers about how to incorporate SEL concepts, perseverance, persistence, you know, kind of growth mindset concepts that would tie into that.
Okay. And then, the other question, you touched on this briefly, but how will families receive information on their students' individual pathway? Is it something that, you know, like, when they take the test at the beginning, then the information won't be sent home so that you have sort of a snapshot of where your student is? Do you have to log on to something?
That's a great question, and that is actually something that we're actually currently working through right now because the students are in the process of taking the assessments, and we actually have to digest those reports and determine what is going to be accessible for families for use, what will be accessible to teachers for their instruction. So, I would say by the time conference time rolls around and the end of October for us, there will be some initial information for families to understand where their students are in terms of their start of their school year.
Are there any other questions?
Where can parents find the videos for assistance?
So, yes, the platform for teachers to use has the videos. So, I'm going to go with my assumption, I'm not 100% certain on this, but that they would be assigned in terms of like via email or Google Classroom so that families can access them. But I will follow up and make sure I have that information clear.
Curious, so Oakland is also using the same program now, too?
That's correct.
Any other questions for Ms. McPartland before we let her sit down? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is the swearing-in of our new student board members. Ms. Coleman, I think, will take care of that.
Guys didn't know we were going to have to do this, did you? Did they warn you?
No.
So, you're adoring audience. Just repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Aiden DeMarco.
I, Riley Stacy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
There's more. I state your name.
I, Aiden DeMarco.
I, Riley Stacy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
For office of member.
For office of member.
For office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I'm not disqualified.
And that I'm not disqualified.
And that I'm not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to a crime.
Due to a crime.
Due to a crime.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And impartially.
And impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the, oh, I keep doing that to you.
Sorry, unjustly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, guys, just signed that line.
Congratulations, and I love that you two, it's what a great model of kindness that they took turns as opposed to when all of the adults have been sworn in, we just talk over each other and say it at the same time. So, nicely done. I know. So, welcome. Okay, we'll come back to you in one second because we'd like you guys to participate in this next part, too. But first, we're going to move on to Section Four, Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to enter Committee of the Whole? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, for the, anyone new that's here, and also for our new student board reps, Committee of the Whole is a time during the board meeting when all of the board members can have conversation with each other. It's not as formal of a process as reading through the agenda. So, we usually pick different topics to allow all of us to have some conversation in the public. Tonight's topic, and we're not trying to put you guys on the spot, so if you would just like to listen for this first time, that is totally fine. If you have anything you'd like to add, we would more than welcome your input as well. So, tonight's topic is, in keeping with the mission statement that we have all just created in Vision 2026 with our strategic plan, that says we are committed to providing an inclusive and supportive environment that inspires and empowers every student. We wanted to take some time this evening at the beginning of the school year to talk about, since this is something that we can for the first time in a couple of years, to really focus on some of the really positive things that have been happening at the beginning of this school year, and also as well as some challenges and some things that we need to work on more because this is the first school year in a while where the topic of every Committee of the Whole does not need to be how we are managing COVID. So, on that note, we wanted to start by seeing kind of what everyone has been hearing from students, teachers, the community about things that are going well so far for this school year. And I thought I would start it off by saying I had the privilege of going with Dr. McDowell and some other administrators the first week of school to visit the different schools. And what was great to see was all of the students, particularly the elementary school students, because, you know, middle and high school students don't get quite as excited for the first week of school, being really excited to be there, getting to participate in their quote-unquote "normal" or typical routines of everybody goes and sits on the carpet together without having to worry about spacing or social distancing, teachers saying how excited they were for those sorts of things to be back and how helpful that was in building classroom community and all of that kind of stuff. So, that was a neat thing to also be able to get to see, and then, to also hear from my own kids that getting to socialize at lunch the way it was back in the day is a positive for them, too, and just feeling like there's more opportunities to participate in things because there's not the fear of it, of it being shut down because of COVID and stuff like that. So, that's kind of my, that's where I'm starting with some of the positives for this school year. But I don't know if anyone else wanted to mention some other positive things that they've been hearing for this year.
Last board meeting, we passed an agenda item, another board policy about the dress code change. I don't know if our student reps are aware of that, but in my daughter's opinion, it's long overdue, a little more freedom, a little more, as they would say, into the 2020s as opposed to the 1920s. So, I think that was a positive because kids have been speaking up on this for the past few years, and they've been heard. Any positive feedback from student board members? Or not positive feedback? Any feedback?
No, I feel really strongly that this is a really good step in the right direction, and I just feel like the worry of, you know, class disruption because somebody's wearing something that is out of the dress code, or just any kind of like fear or anxiety about that has been, you know, completely abolished, and I just feel a lot more comfortable being at school.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Another sort of inclusive idea going along with that is the SAT School Day, which I think is October 12th, but I'm not 100%. But this, I think this day, it allows all students who wish to take the SAT the opportunity to do so during a normal school day as opposed to on a weekend. And it also can help to identify students who could be accessing more challenging classes. So, I think that that's another positive.
I have something else, but I don't want to take up all the time. So, did somebody else want to?
One of the positives that I've heard is with American Sign Language classes, when I ask how my boys' days have been, they've, those are the, one of the updates that I get is that they are enjoying it, and the fact that one's in first and the others in fourth, and they're, can, are learning kind of at the same time. They seem to be enjoying that.
My kindergartner taught us this means it's time to listen, which I thought was a very smart first thing to teach for that teacher. So, yeah, I've been getting that same feedback in my house, too. I wanted to add, and I copied and pasted this so I would get it right because I know some of my fellow CPAG members were going to be in the audience tonight, but one thing that I wanted to plug as something that I'm looking forward to and excited and proud of the school district for doing this year is adding Inclusive Schools Week to our calendar and actually implementing it. So, this is something for everyone to look out for in the coming months. It will take place the first week of December, so from the 5th to the 9th, and the theme is unity within our community. It's something that the CPAG group, the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, has been working to get on the calendar for a couple of years now. It's on, and they're always looking for more volunteers to help with the planning of it. But for anyone who isn't so sure about it, this is the part that I copied and pasted so I would get it right. Inclusive Schools Week has celebrated the progress that schools have made in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population, including students who are marginalized due to disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preference, and other factors. The week also provides an opportunity, an important opportunity for educators, students, and parents to discuss what else needs to be done in order to ensure that their schools continue to improve their ability to successfully educate all children, which I feel like is the, a perfect thing for us to be starting this year as we start our new round of the strategic plan with our mission statement being that we're committed to providing an inclusive and supportive environment for all students. So, I am, I am very excited about that. I'm excited for the potential of what that can bring for our students, for our community. So, that's my, my last positive. Did anyone else want to add anything else? If not, I have a good segue into our, our things that we're still, we're still working on, which is that the last line of that says that also to talk about things that continue to, need to be, continue to be improved, which is important for all of us to be thinking about and to be doing. So, while it's wonderful that there's all of these great things happening in our schools, no one here is suggesting that there is nothing for us to be working on, or that there's nothing for us to, to continue to improve. So, on that note, I know a few people had some other things that they wanted to mention, and to be clear, it's not that we're, any of these things are looking for a resolution for tonight, not putting anyone on the spot, and also that these are, you know, community things that we want to make sure we get right. So, I know, Mary, you had something you wanted to say.
Yeah, I just have two quick things. I don't know how quick they are, but I'll say them quickly. The first is the topic that has been brought up by various board members, and we have discussed in Committee of the Different Color Graduation Gowns to delineate those in NHS and the rest of the class. So, just doing a quick Google search showed a list of other honor societies that Collingswood High School does not participate in, which is completely understandable because, you know, they can't participate in everything. They would have to have, you know, teachers assigned to them, and we understand all of that. But on graduation day, you know, it's recognizing the achievement of the class, and we don't recognize necessarily star athletes, art scholars, things of that nature in a different color robe or anything like that. Also, part of the NHS requires students to earn points by participating in a sport, community service, et cetera, most of which takes place outside of school hours, which can be problematic for students who have to work and/or care for family members. So, just thinking about this, we're not suggesting, or I guess I'm not suggesting, no recognition, right? That, that wouldn't be the direction to go in. But perhaps thinking about how middle school does it and also how they do it in higher ed, which is, you know, different color rope, the pins, those kinds of things. So, that was my first item. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak on that before I move on to the second one.
Yeah, I've talked with Mary about this as well. So, the, kind of the recap, it's that, that question of the robes and like the different color robes at graduation. And to me, I do support looking into having everyone wear the same robe, right? With a different sort of recognition for those achievements. It does seem for me weird to split the class up in that way, right? During such a celebration of everyone, so. I think just with this and anything, like making sure that we get some student, getting student voice and feedback on what they would like to say and how they would like to be honored or show what their achievements have been during that time on that day would be, would be great feedback to add to this conversation.
Yeah, definitely. Like what other, you know, Mary gave a couple of good examples of, you know, a star athlete or an arts award or music scholar, that kind of thing, like what, what else would they want to be celebrated for?
What are the next steps to move something like this forward?
So, the, I'm sorry, sorry. The first would be currently part of our strategic plan calls for organizing student action, student voice action teams as a formal mechanism specifically aligned to strategic planning. But there are also additional student leadership teams on campus, one of which would be student council and the student governing bodies by grade level. So, my next step would be is to work directly with the school leadership team, so the school administrative team, to organize and bring together the student leadership groups that are on campus and to begin having some conversations prior to any recommendation of a pathway to be able to move forward.
Because I would assume robes don't get ordered quite yet. Like, we have some time to have those discussions for this school year.
Not a lot of time, but we, we have.
Right, that's what I was guessing.
We've got about two, two or so months. Our students are pretty good at advocating for themselves, so I'm going to put Riley and Aiden on blast. They organized a 500-student silent walkout last year in opposition to gun violence. So, they're pretty adept at getting students together.
I was just going to ask a similar question, and maybe we make it a point to prioritize that whatever we change will take effect this year. And so, it sounds like we just have like a two-month window where we can gather information, and then, if this is a policy change, I think it is, right? How long will that take to go into effect? Oh, it's not?
It's not a policy change, it's a, it's a practice.
Okay. However we do, we can get this finalized for this graduating class to benefit from?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it would be a good idea to have a group of students come together, meet multiple times to discuss this, and then move forward from there.
So, the second item to be thinking about in terms of inclusiveness is the cost of the senior class trip, which is approximately $1,600. I want to make this sentence, I'm going to say this very slowly so that I'm not misunderstood, just clearly, I should say. This is not for this year, we're not suggesting any changes, and the board fully recognizes and supports the important bonding experience of a senior class trip, and furthermore supports the continuation of a senior class trip. We would just like to get some information. So, like the possibility of a percentage of the students who participate in the trip? And is it possible to maybe poll the students, sophomores, juniors, current seniors, and ask how many plan to take part in the senior trip? How many would take part if the cost was reduced? Suggestions from students about other options which could possibly be less expensive? Can we also poll families in the community? And I think I had another point, but it wasn't that one. So, I apologize. So, that's, that's all I had on that. I don't know if anybody else wants to, it's just kind of an exorbitant cost, but I just don't have the answer to any of those other numbers.
Thank you. When was the last time that the price went up? But so, it's been the same for a while.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know. I can look through all the student activities. Like, we keep files on the senior class trip. I'll have to look.
I just want to make sure like inflation's impacted or anything like that. Also, have we historically provided any grants or scholarships to support families who can't afford the trip?
No, no.
Maybe that's something to also consider.
That was my other point. Thank you for bringing it up. I totally forgot. Yes, if we could think about maybe some type of fundraising or something like that.
Yeah, just, just two comments from my side. Number one, my school trip here in Collingswood, my senior trip, was to Washington, DC. So, maybe a thought is you keep the trip, you change the location, which should, should affect the, the cost of the trip as well. The other thing is on the gowns. I'm not sure I agree with everybody looking alike. The only time I had to dress like everybody else was when I was in the Army, and that's not exactly what we're running here. So, I think some recognition or some change is appropriate at this point, but just my thoughts.
I just wanted to be really, really clear that in this discussion, there's absolutely, what is not on the table is not having a senior trip. So, just wanted to make that part super clear, that I, I didn't hear that from Mary. It's, I certainly wouldn't support that anyway. I don't think most of. I don't think most of us would, um, but it's more just information gathering about is, um, is it, are enough kids, are, are there kids that are being left out because of the cost, I think is the main call on that.
And do the kids, you know, still want to go to this location? And just getting more information is pretty much it.
Did anyone else want to say anything on that topic? Or go ahead.
It's not, it's another topic. I just had a question in this, you know, I'm not sure this is the right place to raise it, but I've heard a lot of issues going on with the middle school Chromebook policy changing, and I was wondering if someone could speak to that because I'm sure people have questions about it, why it was done, and how it's going so far.
I was going to say, so I can, I happen to have a middle schooler, so, or Clinton as well, um, Chromebooks, um, in the middle school are no longer, um, being sent home with students. They're staying in the classrooms. And if you want your child to have a Chromebook that goes home, um, there was a form to fill out, and you needed to, to pay the insurance, but they're not, the, the one, I guess the one-to-one initiative, the way it, it has been for all of us in the past is not quite the same. So I'm assuming that's what you've been hearing about.
Right, and I, I didn't, I, I had not heard about that because I don't happen to have a middle schooler, but why was that implemented? Was it a cost issue or supply issue?
Great, great question. So it was, it was a combination of the two. So current state, there are 800 outstanding, um, technology tickets. We have five technicians. Whenever you send machines home, you introduce a whole host of variables that are beyond our control. And in a, in a successful one-to-one initiative, it is one-to-one during the school day. So we had to make a decision. So a lot of this really manifested during the assessments where we were scrambling in order to, to ensure that there were sufficient numbers, um, of Chromebooks on campus just to participate in testing. There are hundreds of Chromebooks that have been damaged, and some of them have not been returned. So the finance associated, every time you need to replace a Chromebook, it's about $475. So the $25 helps to offset some of the maintenance, but it actually doesn't pay for the cost of replacement. And from an economic perspective, we, we are not in a financial position to keep, um, sending all of the machines home and then having sufficient number of machines during the day for the cases where individuals forget them at home, um, drop them in the sink. Has happened, dog takes a bite out of them. So all of those kind of core challenges that young people have when they make, they, they, they make honest mistakes. But the capacity of our technology team has been exceeded, so we had to prioritize, um, school-based daily instruction with, with our, with our Chromebooks.
Just as a follow-up though, and do kids have textbooks for every class now? Is, is anyone going to fall, um, by the wayside because they can't afford a computer at home? Is, I'm sure that, just making sure that's all been addressed by this new policy.
So I don't want to speak explicitly for, for, for the middle school, but I know that they are looking at, um, students individually based on hardship. A majority of the classes don't have traditional textbooks that they send home anymore. For one, they're heavy, and kids don't carry those thick things home. So I, I think that, you know, at the middle school and the high school specifically, I know that the faculty and staff are really having targeted conversations about things like homework, about things like extracurricular, about things like projects, um, to be able to address this logistical issue that we've got right now. So current, current state is we are, um, scrambling in order to make sure that every single student has access to a digital device at school. We come out from under the current circumstance, uh, we, there may be some additional flexibilities, but current state, um, this was a decision that, uh, the school and the technology team needed to make in order to prioritize daily instruction.
Okay, because like I know in high school, like a kid doesn't, isn't going to have to put, uh, turn something in at midnight on a day and not have a device to do it, correct? Like right now, you have to sometimes turn in your, um, assignment by, you know, 11 or 12, and that does not happen in middle school, I take it?
It may not, but homework is being assigned that does need to be done on a computer. That is happening.
And that's what's being addressed on a?
I don't know. That was a concern I was going to raise.
Families can bring one home, they just have to fill out a form and pay the $25.
True, but it hasn't, they haven't been sent home yet, but homework is being assigned.
That is a problem? If the kid, if the children are penalized because they can't finish their homework, obviously.
Right, or if they have to be the one to, to go up to the teacher to say, "I don't have access to a computer at home, so this is why I couldn't do the homework." That's the concern I have.
After the form being filled out.
I'll have, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Another question I had along with that, I'd be curious about feedback from the teachers is, um, I know that the, the way it's working is that there are individual carts in each classroom, and so that means at the beginning of each class period, everybody needs to check out a Chromebook, um, bring it to their desk, log in, and then at the end of the period, they have to log back out and put the Chromebook back in the, um, the cart. And so I would be curious about the feedback from the teachers, like how much time is that wasting in their 42-minute class period? Is there maybe a better way? If this is the way it has to happen, is there a better way to get the kids the Chromebooks for the day perhaps, so that they can keep them all day long? They don't have to keep logging in, logging out, and then turn them back in at the end of the day at the, at the very least? Because the, the feedback from my kid is that takes up a lot of time in the class.
Um, and just one, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you go.
Uh, I just wanted to speak on that because we are high schoolers and we get to take our Chromebooks home. But even so, the 40-minute period is extremely short, and especially compared to like pre-COVID, we had, I think, 50 something, 55 maybe, um, minutes. And so already, with, even without the Chromebook issue, class feels really, really short. And especially, you know, if you're taking an honors or AP class, like it's just not enough time. So I really can't imagine having to check out and then check back in a Chromebook during
I was just going to ask or add, um, if we knew this coming into this school year, like were we aware that there was this lack of Chromebooks? Or, or is this another one of the supply chain issues, like that we wanted to get them, didn't, weren't able to get them, or are there no funds to get them?
It's not a lack of Chromebooks. It's the deployment of them. So instead of, there's Chromebooks for every child. It's just for the middle schoolers, they stay on campus, um, each evening as opposed to going home. Again, unless they fill out the form with the tech team, the family fills it out and they're allowed to take it home. But there, there is, we budget over $200,000 every single year for Chromebooks, and we buy them every summer, hundreds and hundreds of units. We, as old ones are being, um, what's the word? Yes, retired because their life, um, lifespan was exceeded, they're being replaced with new Chromebooks.
So the 800 tickets doesn't mean that there aren't, um, there are like 800 not working Chromebooks?
Yeah, that's not what that means, no. Just every day, anytime there's a tech issue, um, either in the classroom or the teacher or with administrator, anywhere in the district, everyone is instructed to put in a tech ticket. So we, we can prioritize, obviously, and the staff, the tech team, they prioritize a classroom issue and instruction issue before something else. So that's just a way for us internally to handle the workflow.
Got it.
My, my understanding is that the volume of damage being transported back and forth was so significant. Like I know with my son, he would go to class and like four kids would have broken Chromebooks, and then they would be scrambling to find four replacements to be able to teach during the day. And like classroom teachers were struggling because students weren't like prepared to be able to learn because a screen cracked overnight, keys disappeared, somebody threw their bookbag and a thing shattered. So I, I, I see both, I see both sides, right? Like the more we're moving equipment around, the more likely that it's going to be damaged. And we only have five people to fix however many thousands of, I'm assuming, right? We probably have 1,500.
And that, and that's why the, the request came for the mid, they actually started at the middle school, and it's actually, they, I want to say even before COVID hit, right? That, um, they wanted to start going back to Chromebook carts in the classroom. Cause a lot of kids was, when we had the Chromebook store, a lot of kids would spend a lot of time in the Chromebook store trying to get a unit replaced or getting a replacement unit, um, and then, yeah, then they're out of class. But that request came for the middle school, so we actually worked it into the budget this year. So the middle school, um, got Chromebooks, uh, Chromebook carts, excuse me, this year. But it, again, it came as a result of the, um, the middle school requesting it for these reasons.
So that was the pre-COVID policy? Cause COVID changed it, policy, right?
Pre-COVID, no, it was a request from the middle school that they go back to carts, but then COVID hit, so everybody just took their unit home. And then when we went back to normal, we put the carts back in the budget.
Well, that's understandable, but I guess what I don't understand is like the disconnect with kids having to do homework online and not being, having the resources to do it. So is there any way we can get an update on that ahead of the next set of meetings? Because you don't want anyone falling behind, it's only the third week of school.
And to clarify that this was, like the, the carts was the plan from the beginning of the school year? I, to me, that, that is something that seems weird that we would have that policy but not have, um, not have the system for sending those, those Chromebooks home with families al- also in place? And then are they being sent back with families currently that have requested?
I, I, I haven't made the request, so I, I mean, I knew the crest, request was available, but I have a computer at home that I honestly prefer my son use anyway, so I didn't request one. So I don't know if they're being sent home.
And I, I also want to make, make sure, which it sounds like this is being considered, but I want to make sure that, um, for folks who really do need Chromebooks at home, uh, that the $25 isn't, um, cost prohibitive. And also that, um, there are ways to, to access learning materials if they don't have a, a device at home. I think those are very important, like pieces to, 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 to consider, uh, given this, this policy. And I, I totally hear the, the logistics nightmare of having to, uh, replace screens, you know, uh, every single day, uh, which happens, right? When you're in middle school and you have a, a computer. But, uh, yeah, there's a lot of learning pieces here that, that are concerning to me.
Can I ask how we communicated with parents about the change in policy? Was it just via email or Genesis?
Uh, it was, um, at the middle school orientation for sixth graders, and I think sixth graders and new students. I don't know if there were any of those there, but, um, it was announced that there was a potential that Chromebooks would, that the, the way things had been done in the past would change and that Chromebooks might not be going home with students. Then I want to say, I'm not going to get the timeline exactly right, but within the next, before school started, I do believe an email went out that, that said for seventh and eighth, cause seventh and eighth graders had their Chromebooks at home with them over the summer. So said for those kids, bring them into school to, to bring, bring them back. And that, that Chromebooks would no longer be going home with, with students, um, for the school year, bring the Chromebooks back. And then I believe there was also the form in that same email or an email very shortly afterwards that said, "If you would like a Chromebook to come home with, to be kept at home," meaning you're not bringing it back and forth, but a separate one to be kept at home, please fill out this form. So that, that all did happen in a fairly timely manner.
But yeah, so I'm wondering if part of this connect is parents, I, I mean, I, it happens to me all the time, I just am not aware. I don't read the email or whatever the case is. Is there a way for a student to, with their counselor or homeroom person, request that they need it, and then a follow-up email be sent to that particular fat parent? Because the student will be more on top of what they, you know, of communicating it in real time, and the parent can then finalize the request by sending it in the form online? If you're just sending it to the parent, the parent has been functioning for, what, three years now? Cause even before COVID, com, uh, these book, uh, laptops went home with the kids. So they're functioning on their, uh, uh, normalcy that doesn't exist anymore, and so they might just need another way, another communication about it. And I think for me, it's, it's not an issue. I understand the change. I think that the issue is the disconnect between making this change and teachers still assigning online-based homework. That's, that's the concern for me, doesn't make sense.
I would also just say too, that situations change throughout the course of the year, so making it easy for people to find the information if something happens and now they need, do need access for a Chromebook, or maybe they don't need it and just knowing how they could turn it back in. So I, I, I don't want to get to the situation where a kid is in November and they haven't been doing their homework because they haven't known where to go and get a Chromebook, when we have them one for one for, for everybody.
We will follow up with the middle school, um, and, um, by the end of the week, get you, uh, an update.
Uh, anything else to, um, to discuss at the moment for Committee of the Hall? All right, um, on that note, is there a motion to, um, exit Committee of the Hall?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, moving on to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information, I just wanted to highlight a few things. There's, um, we've got a couple more back-to-school nights, some, um, elementary PT, or actually elementary and high school PTA events. School is closed October 5th and October 10th. SAT school day is October 12th, um, and elementary conferences are the 24th to the 27th. So, um, a lot of, and there's a college planning night on the 17th, so lots of things, um, to check out on the agenda for future, for dates this year.
I think the last date is wrong. I'm pretty sure that should be November 17th.
Right, cause there's probably not an October 13th and an October 17th. That's a good point. Not on a Thursday, anyway. Okay, so let's, let's just assume that's supposed to be November 17th. Um, so the, the final date there is Thursday, October, or November, excuse me, 17th for the, the FAFSA college planning night. Thank you, Syria. Uh, moving on to section six, routine board business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 22nd, 2022 regular board meeting? And a second? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
We have reached our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this, did I need to do, okay. The, the purpose for this public comment section is to discuss, discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be, may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate clarifying communication will go out later in the week, and for more general concerns, they may be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. So like I said, this one is for items listed on the agenda. If you would like to speak, uh, you can come here, please state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Linda Smith, 506 Edgewood Avenue, Westmont. I just started my eighth year working for ESS in this district. I'm an instructional assistant in Mrs. Curly's MD K-22 self-contained classroom. I love what I do, or I would not be here tonight fighting for the opportunity to stay. There is an addendum being presented to you tonight for approval. This addendum addresses the topic that I've been pushing for almost 18 months. Unfortunately, it only addresses a small portion of what I'm asking for. My journey began when I met with Dr. McDowell in May of 2021. I told him of my desire to work for him directly. I shared with him that as an ESS employee, we have no incentives, no evaluations, no yearly increases, no paid time off. He shared with me his belief that no district should ever outsource positions that work directly with students. His goal is to work with a budget that would allow direct hires, and that he would not forget the IAs as he worked out the details of this new budget. It was too late for the 2122 school year, he told me, but to remain patient, I emailed him for updates, nothing ever came of it. As time went on, the battle continued. After more emails and meetings, this addendum tonight was written. And while I'm appreciative of this small step, and I do ask you to approve it, it does not come close to what I believe the ESS aides of this district deserve. We deserve yearly pay increases and paid time off based on our years of service. We're in a crisis. The job of an aide is a very difficult position to fill. A new hire is paid $98 a day. There is little to no training, so these new hires are thrown right into the fire. Some make it, most don't. How does a school district expect to attract good, potential people to fill this critical role by offering so little? There are aides that have been here for eight years, making a hundred dollars a day, $2 more than a new hire. How does a school district expect to retain these people by offering them no How does a school district expect to retain these people by offering them no incentive to stay? I have worked closely with some amazing aides that have had no choice but to leave and find other employment, because we are never given raises. Ms. Coleman told me that any money allotted for a potential raise is consumed by the district to hire more aides. This district needs to find room in the budget each year to reward those still here and to attract new hires. The aide crisis is a systemic issue across the district. The lack of aides or quality of these untrained people, through no fault of their own, is 100% affecting student outcomes. It's a safety issue, there are times during the day when we do not have enough eyes on these children. If we must take a day off, ESS provides no substitutes, so you as a district are setting yourselves up for non-compliance legal action. I met with Dr. McDowell and his subordinates on September 13th. I asked him again why we do not get raises. His response to me was nothing short of insulting. He asked me if I was married. He asked me what, or how I would feel if he came to my house and told my husband and myself what to do with our money. I asked him if he seriously thought that's what I was doing by asking for a raise, and he had no answer. He wanted to know what made my job so important to make me think that I deserved more money. He told me, everyone thinks their job is important, everyone wants more money. And then finally, and condescendingly, he said, Mrs. Smith, you know, you do have the option of quitting. His response can only be taken one way, he has no idea what we do every day. I invited him to come visit our classroom, see for himself what we do every day. I should never have to explain the importance of serving these children to the person who runs this district. And if I do, you have a much bigger problem to solve. And do I need to state the obvious? If he does not value my job as an aide in an MD classroom, how on earth does he value the child that I sit next to? Do you? I've chosen to come to speak to you tonight because we need an advocate. I know the change will not happen with Dr. McDowell. He told me that coming to you was pointless. He makes these decisions, and he may be right, but you evaluate the outcomes of district operations. You have final authority in this district. If you feel something is mismanaged, you have the power to fix it. So we ask you to fix this problem. These children deserve aides who are dedicated and loyal to them, aides that long to see them thrive, aides that cheer them on as they reach their goals. Some of these little children haven't even found their voices yet. We are their voice, and our voices are going unheard and unanswered, but we are growing weary of doing the job we love. We are tired of asking for raises to people who don't believe we deserve them, but we still show up every day to continue doing the job that we love, because we see potential in every one of these kids. They just need a little bit of help along the way, and that, Dr. McDowell, is what makes my job so important. And that is why I'm addressing you, the board, so that you can be informed and make the right decision for us and the children of Collingswood. Thank you. And I have copies of this, along with my own suggested resolution, if anybody would like a copy. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Huffman. I live at 218 Crestmont Avenue in Blackwood, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, I totally missed your last name.
Huffman, H-U-F-F-M-A-N.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Laura, and I am a former instructional assistant here at Zane North Elementary. I worked at Zane North in the multiple stable classrooms, grades K to 2, also having worked in the MD classroom, grades 3 to 5, as well as in second grade and occasionally first grade. I was here almost four years, and unfortunately, I had to leave this year. I left because although I loved the school, my colleagues and the students, there was zero support from the upper staff, meaning above our principal. And here, we have no voice, no sense of belonging, no raises, no benefits, no paid time off, nothing. And it gets worse year after year. We have empty promises, and our attempts at changing things are ignored every year. So I had to move on to a job where they treated their support staff, instructional assistants, IAs, classroom assistants, et cetera, very differently than here, with raises, benefits, a voice, a feeling of belonging, paid time off, 401K, et cetera. And a lot of school districts are moving in this direction, but not Collingswood. Tonight, I'm here to support my friends and colleagues, our amazing instructional assistants who put every ounce of effort they have, their love and dedication into every single day they work here, and with every single student they work with. I had to move on, like many before me, for the exact same reasons that I explained, and many will be leaving after me very soon. You can either be part of the problem or part of the solution for change, and right now, you are part of the problem. We need people who will be part of the solution and want change, not only for your support staff, but for these amazing students, teachers, and the future of this district. Thank you.
So I just wanted to say that, just very briefly, that this is a tough issue, and it is not something that the board takes lightly, and we believe that all of our students deserve to get the supports that they need, which includes, for some of them, instructional assistants. And with the board and the district is very well aware that this is an issue that needs to be addressed, and that we are working to do address, and also can fully appreciate the fact that it doesn't feel like it's moving fast enough, which is unfortunately so often the case in education, that changes that are trying to be made don't happen fast enough. And this is certainly one of those examples, and I feel frustrated that it can't happen faster as well. I know Dr. McDowell has expressed that to me as well, wishing that this was an easier fix than it unfortunately is, but I do know that he did want to speak to some of the things that we are, we have, we are making as a priority for this budget cycle.
So good evening, everyone. First, we'd like to thank the two previous speakers. It takes courage to step forward and speak to the issues that they are passionate about. But I do feel that it's important for us to acknowledge what we have done. So none of, myself included, are in disagreement that compensation needs to be dramatically improved for instructional assistants. That part, we agree. Over the last 20 months, we have focused on settling three of our current collective bargaining agreements. In January of 2021, we settled our teacher contract, which included pay increases, special thanks to the board negotiating team, as well as CEA leadership. Within this past current school year, we also were able to settle our building services employees agreement, honoring their commitment as well. In addition to settling the third collective bargaining agreement within the last roughly year and a half, the Collingswood principals and supervisors associations. In this current upcoming budget cycle, which starts on Friday, we have made a priority, this has been shared with our greater, our greater leadership team, and it will be included in the recommendations from the board's perspective as we move into the budget cycle season. There were contributing factors that led to the privatization of our instructional assistants over 10 years ago. I'm not here to debate what the financial circumstances are, or what were the conditions that led to such decision. What I did share, and my professional record speaks to it, is that I feel very strongly that if possible, that school districts should make an attempt to prioritize individuals who focus and support instruction in the classroom with highly qualified, well-compensated individuals that report directly to the district. So that I did share with Ms. Smith, and have been willing to share that with anyone. In my previous location, there were similar decisions that were made, and we were able, in about an 18-month period, we were able to come to an agreement. That was a different set of circumstances, a different organization. Currently, in this upcoming budget cycle, we have a lot that needs to be discussed, and what has been shared in our opening week, where for the first time in three years, we brought together 500 of our district staff of all designations, all positions, all levels of experience, and we talked about the importance of many voices in one mission. We talked about how everyone in our organization has value, even if they don't have the same level of influence, their value does not change. And that the way that you garner influence is by putting good ideas on the table and working collaboratively with your colleagues. We have scheduled time to meet with ESS, to talk through some of these challenges that have been presented, and will probably continue to be presented the rest of this evening. And we are committed to a pathway forward that honors the contribution that our instructional assistants have provided for many, many years. But there is a process. There's a whole host of priorities, and what has been shared is that in our district planning around an equity-based system, is our collective goal is to make sure that students and staff have what they need in order to meet the standard. Budgets are tricky, and budgets are always a continued conversation. There are always going to be things that you're able to fit in within any given year, and some things that unfortunately have to be shelved, and are then brought back that next year. Our instructional assistants were prioritized for this current school year. We had huge hurdles coming out of COVID that could not be overcome, and we had to make some significant cuts in our thinking to the tune of about $3 million. So when we think about where do we go next, we are not denying that our instructional assistants have been left out. We are not denying that our instructional assistants need to be compensated appropriate to the task. We look forward to working collaboratively with not just ESS, but also some of our other bargaining units, in order to determine what it looks like and when it can take place, not whether or not it should happen. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all crystal clear, that when our team has talked about these subjects, we've talked very fondly, because we value every single one of our employees. And every single one of our employees is important, and every single one of our employees has tremendous value, because they touch the lives of our students and our children. So this is not a have versus a have-nots, this is not a, we're trying to pit different organizations against themselves, we're just being very honest and transparent that decisions don't just happen in the middle of a school year, there is a timeline in which they happen. The budget development season begins October 1st. In general, we start with training at the school-based site. All of the district departments also go through a very similar training, and then we start operating based on a projected estimate of revenues that we believe we may be receiving, which are not generally confirmed until middle of January. Once we have actually confirmed the revenues that have come in, we further refine our budget, and then we make sure that we're having ongoing discussions with each of our schools, each of our departments, as well as the finance committee on the Board of Education, to be able to work together to continue to refine and identify what the needs are, while making sure that we submit in March a balanced budget that meets said needs. That budget then goes to the state for further review. The state then determines what changes need to be made or not made, and then we receive an approved budget from the state, which is then confirmed and approved by the Board of Education in April. This is the normal cycle that happens every single year, and this is what we will continue to do, starting on October 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Seeing that no one else is standing up for public comment, I'm going to assume we're moving on to section eight, the superintendent's report, although I do see that there are no reports to give, which I'm assuming is because the school year has just begun. Is that accurate? Okay, so then moving on to section nine, our inaugural student board representative reports. Sorry, guys, just kidding. Just swearing in, that was my bad. They looked so scared, I'm so sorry. That was my fault, that is not yours. Thank you very much for your input during committee of the whole, and we look forward to hearing from both of you at our next board meeting. Don't worry about it at all.
Very happy to be here, I just want to tell you that.
Moving on to section 10, the business administrator board secretary report, Ms. Coleman.
Item 10.01 are your August of 2022 monthly budget transfers for approval. And 10.02 is your August 2022 board secretary and treasurer's reports and cash reports. 10.03 is your student activity cash report for the month of August. 10.04, we don't have a food service financial statement for September yet, so October will have September and so forth and so on. And then 10.05, we have the listing of the September purchase orders that have been issued, and a listing of warrants to be paid tomorrow morning in item 10.06.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Section 11, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee, Mr. Craig. We're excusing the student reps because they have work to do anyway, and I forgot to do that before your report, so there we go. Thanks, guys, see you next month.
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers, and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Items 11-2 to 11-9 are asking you to approve the board secretary's report, as was presented. 11-10 is approval of the standard operating procedures, and the updates to that. 11-11 is contract renewal for the attorney who is assisting us with current real estate on projects. 11-12 is approving an RFP for a board engineer. 11-13 is approving the boys and girls volleyball teams to join the Burlington County Scholastic, since there's not enough within Camden County for them to have enough games for a season. 11-14 is approving a consultant for the child study team external review. 11-15 is the addendum to the ESS contract, where instructional aides that have been with the district would receive a retention bonus and three personal days, they've been in the district, believe, five years or more. 11-16 is the acceptance of a school security grant from the state for over $119,000. And then 17 through 20, all use of space requests approvals for First Collingswood Youth Theater, then a wrestling camp, after-school Bible Club at Sharp, and then the community chorus here at Zane.
Can I make a comment on before you do? I just wanted to explain item 11.16, you're not having deja vu. This is the old Alyssa's Law security grant that we've probably approved two or three times already. Long story short, we had to prove compliance with the Alyssa's Law, the panic button. That was in 1920, so in 2020, we had to upload all of our compliance, and then we got approved by the state lawmakers for $119,000 to be used for other security upgrades. That grant was submitted and approved in 2020. We got an email a couple weeks ago that, frustratingly, but we did do it, that we missed the deadline for payout in the last school year, so they wanted us to submit it a third time. So, and even though they have access to the same online system I have, they just could have gone back two years and looked at everything that I personally uploaded, and somebody in my office uploaded this last time, we've probably done it three times already, they wanted us to re-upload everything and approve it again, and I couldn't hit the final submit button, because they actually want a new board resolution that occurs like beyond a certain date in September, so that's why it's on the agenda, and I'm a little frustrated, but it is deja vu, and we will be getting this money eventually. So that's it, my editorial comment for tonight, but that, hopefully this year, we will get this money that I've been sitting on since 1920.
Thanks.
That's it, right?
So, yeah, seeking approval from, yeah, 11-2 to 11-20.
So do I have a motion to approve items 11.02 to 11-20? And a second? Questions or comments from board members, but beforehand, Matt, could you just speak to why there is not an agenda item here that talks about the lease for the Good Shepherd property, since I would imagine folks are expecting that?
Sure.
Thank you.
We, currently where we sit with the lease is that attorneys are going back and forth over details to make sure that we have everything finalized in the shared use of the space during the lease terms. So things that we want to, we're trying to anticipate for everything that could potentially come up, but we want to make sure that we have all of that spelled out clearly in the lease, so that we're not going back after we've signed something and then having to make changes. So we were hopeful that we would have had it on today, this board meeting.
So we were hopeful that we would have had it on today, this board meeting. We are in daily communication, our attorneys, with the diocese attorney. They're making progress. There is potential that we would have a special board meeting in the upcoming weeks to approve the lease so that we could begin occupying the space and getting it ready for use. If not, then we remain hopeful that the October board meeting, everything would be done.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I have a couple. On 11-18, the, I only see gold, is that the one? Yeah, all I see is gold. The certificate of insurance that was included indicates that there must be a written agreement in place to add us as an additional insured under that insurance policy. And the question is, is that, do we have a written agreement with that?
The signed facility use agreement that we sign and execute and send back to them is the written agreement. That's what we send back to all of our facilities use folks.
That may be what we send back, but I'd like to know that their insurance company thinks that that's a written agreement.
That's what they got back from the office that was signed up.
That's not what I asked.
That is what you asked.
No, it isn't, okay.
And regards to your next question, 11.19, they are sending a revised insurance contract. They use our facility every single year. We were in touch with the, I forget the name of the group. We did reach out to the organization, the pastor, and it just didn't get here in time today. But I am confident that we will receive it.
All right, the certificate that we have right now doesn't include us as an additional insured.
It doesn't have the language "additional insured" checked off, but we are listed the address, not only for Collingswood Public School, but I believe Sharp Elementary School as the site, which is compliant.
Okay. Question on, this is related, this is on a specific item. 11-15, the ESS additional payment. Just for clarification, I thought I knew what this was, but the aides are employed by ESS.
Yes.
Who then sends them to us.
Correct.
So why are we negotiating directly with the aides for their salary?
We're not. We are, we are, no, this is, no, this is, are you referring to this item or the comments? I just want to make sure I'm answering your question. We have a meeting scheduled on October 11th with ESS to discuss the comments that were made in public and the comments that were made by Ms. Smith to Dr. McDowell in a meeting.
Okay, so the bottom line is there, we don't have the authority to increase their salary. We can increase the payment to ESS, who then has to increase their salary. Is that correct?
That's correct, and some of the, there are other concerns mentioned by Ms. Smith in the meeting with Dr. McDowell that we want to address with ESS, since we're going to review the entire contract.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Bill asks my question, for the most part, about the ESS employees. But again, to clarify, so each, so ESS, not that we know what ESS does, but the assumption is that ESS does not pay all their employees a flat rate. Each school sort of negotiates what they will pay their employees.
We originally set the rates back when we privatized back in 2014. And then I think since then, if you look at the contract, and I can find the month, we probably did it last May, it's up to like a page long. When we first outsourced, or maybe it was two items. We now probably have 10 to 12 different positions listed based on the different needs of the children. You have regular aide, then you've got a special ed aide, then there's one with a special certificate, then there's like a job coach. I'm trying to remember all the different ones. But based on what they're doing, we had all these different rates approved. And each year, ESS brings forward an addendum. So like, it's the set rate that they get their hourly rate, and then ESS puts an admin fee on top of it. I think it was last May.
But each district negotiates its own?
Correct, yeah, the base rate of pay.
Okay.
Right, yes.
Sorry. I understand they're not district employees, right? We negotiated a contract, we negotiated that almost 10 years ago, which is annualized every year, right? The $3.51 per employee, so they're going to keep $51 for themselves and then give $300 to the employee? That seems like a lot. I mean, usually like we're working like a 15% admin fee, which this, it's like 17. It just seems like ESS is keeping a lot of money per employee bonus. Like, I mean, if that's their practice, that's their practice. There's nothing that we can do about that, but it just seems like a lot that they're skimming off the top.
Yeah, all these are topic for October 11th, for the agenda with ESS to go over.
Okay, thank you. The CST review, that's the consultant that we had for our special needs programming, right? We talked about this a couple, like, a couple board meetings ago of a comprehensive review of our entire, that's what this is.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions or comments?
When is this "all I see is gold"? They're supposed to start next week or this week? Because I agree with Bill that that certificate isn't sufficient.
So I mean, are either of you proposing to do anything with the item?
I mean, the certificate really isn't worth the papers printed on, but to the extent that they would refer back to this, it says that work performed on behalf of the named insured, and they're not performing any work on behalf of the school district of, you know, Collingswood School District. I would just be concerned that they may come back and say that this isn't going to protect us, to the point Bill had. So, you know, if we could table it or we could rework it ahead of, you know, but I see that they're supposed to come in, can we possibly table it? I'm getting like into, you know, because I know about this stuff like Bill does, and I have concerns that we should have a little more protection if we're going to be using, they're going to be using our facilities.
We did reach out to them to get revisions. Again, they didn't make it onto tonight's meeting. I mean, if you want to table it, that's your decision. We'd have to reach out to the group and tell them that they can't have their, I guess we have to tell Declan Moody. It's up to you.
Is there a way to approve pending them getting us the updated?
I mean, we have been communicating. I think the issue too is, it's like an organization. It's not like Declan going to somebody. I think it's an Olympic wrestler, and he's going through some group. So even to get what we got was kind of, it took a little while to get this paperwork even completed so that we could have the wrestling camp held here. Again, based on all the feedback we got at finance and over the weekend from Mr. Stotts, we have reached out. It's just nothing has come in as of meeting time.
So, but then, do you have any confidence that by October 2nd, more information would be able to? Or are you saying this may be it?
This may be it. I mean, we were reaching out, so when I get comments from board members, I act on it. I do act on the comments. It's just nothing, nothing has come in. It has been requested several times.
Yeah, this isn't brain surgery. These entities, as you say, have been with us for years. They know what the requirements are.
This one hasn't been with us. This is a new one. The Gospel Ministries, the all I see is gold is the new one. Yeah, new one.
Declan has been here for years, he knows what the procedures are. But be that as it may, we have those written into the procedures for a reason, and it's to protect Collingswood. You know, as long as nothing happens, everything's fine. Nobody cares anything. But you have a very significant loss, and all of a sudden, a lot of insurance company lawyers are going to be reading the contracts, they're going to be reading the certificates, they're going to be reading the policies, and they're going to be not denying claims, which we will still have coverage under our own insurance. But our underwriter assumes that he has $1 million underneath of him, and that's not going to be the case.
Yeah, and this is, I would not be voting in favor of this. I would want to table it.
So can you, if, do we need to? Yeah, so make the motion.
I move to table item 11.18. Or can we say conditionally approved but following receipt of the required information?
I'd just like to comment that in the past, we have, as Matt pointed out, we have said approval pending the proper documents be provided.
And I guess we make that, we could do that.
The event not canceled, and the impetus is on the organization to provide the correct documents.
So if I could just weigh in just really quickly. I am not denying that the appropriate insurance information in order to protect a district must be produced. But I also want to be mindful that we have a championship wrestling program that we also don't want to discourage in all of this. So if we could come up with a conditional approval, that then puts the onus on the entity in order to produce the appropriate documentation so that our students don't miss out on this opportunity to train with an Olympian.
I agree. I don't want that to happen either. This may be the push they need. So I, okay, I amend my motion to revision on item 11-18 to provisionally approve it pending receipt of approved insurance documentation that meets with the approval of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
So moved.
What is regulations and policy? Yeah, for insurance.
Correct.
Chris's motion, I heard a second.
Make sure I got the wording correct. The motion is to provisionally approve item 11.18 pending correct paperwork.
Yes.
That complies with our, our.
Right, that complies with board policy. So roll call on the motion, correct? That's what we need to do?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I was asking, you too, you probably know the answer to that. Do we do a roll call on the motion, correct, first? Before then doing the next thing?
Hardly anything that she says.
Yes, I'm trying to catch up.
Okay, so roll call, Bethan, whenever you're ready.
All right, Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Mello's absent. Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Caden.
Yes.
Now do we have a motion to approve items 11.02 to 11.20? And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera. Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes, except items 11.18, 11.19, where I vote no.
Mrs. Caden.
Yes. Moving on to Section 12, the Curriculum Committee, Ms. Henry.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs in the school calendar. Tonight is presented, there's no elementary and middle school field trips in 12.02 and 12.03, but in 12.04, we do have high school overnight field trips, one for this year's annual senior trip and the Model UN. 12.07 through 12.09 are home instruction and out-of-district placements. 12.10 and 12.11 are two requests for senior privilege for students to continue attending. And 12.12 is our emergency virtual or remote instruction plan. This is our plan that's required by the DOE should, you know, in light of the last two years, should something happen like it did before, the DOE is requesting a formal plan, and that's what this is. And tonight, we are seeking approval of items 12.04 through 12.12.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I just had a quick question. So there was personnel that Katie Balaban, I believe, is no longer heading up Model UN. So does that name need to be changed on 12.06? Or am I wrong on that?
Whoever takes over for her will just take care of the field.
So it doesn't need to be changed on here?
The paperwork for the field trip preceded her resignation from that.
Got it.
Yeah, so we want to get the field trip on the calendar.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera. Mrs. Severino. Mrs. Sheridan Celia. Mr. Stotts.
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk were abstained.
And Mrs. Caden.
Yes. Section 13 Personnel, Ms. Sheridan Celia.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers all co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Today, we have for your approval, the agenda. Item 13.02, Ms. Walsh is retiring as middle school math teacher. Items 13.03 to 13.08 are various resignations. 13.09 and 13.10 are the appointment of special education teachers. 13.11, the appointment of a high school long-term substitute replacement teacher. Item 13.12 is the appointment of a preschool long-term sub. 13.13 is a revised contract to Mr. Walker, who's our new HVAC tech. 13.14 is an administrative title change for Mr. Whalen. The appointment of a student family liaison is at item 13.15. 13.16 is the listing of athletic head coaches. 13.17 is the fall and winter athletic personnel, which takes up a better part of two pages here. 13.18 are the 2022, 2023 district extra-duty pay stipend list. And 13.19 is the same list but for the high school, at the high school level. 13.20, the middle school non-athletic EDP stipends. 13.21, the elementary school non-athletic extra-duty pay stipends. 13.22 is district class coverage, extra-duty pay. 13.23, a list, and 13.3, I'm sorry, 13.25 are permanent substitutes. 13.26, lunchtime playground aides. 13.27 are building service custodians part-time. 13.28, the appointment of student teacher to do observations. 13.29 is the appointment of Sharp student liaisons, I'm sorry, family liaisons. We are tabling 13.30, 13.30 will not be voting on that this evening. 13.31, building capacity, building capacity for career pathways facilitators. The appointment of three individuals, I'm sorry, two individuals. 13.32 is the 2022 Summer Accelerated Learning Camps Elementary. 13.33, the summer hours for the secretaries, for one secretary. 13.34, summer hour approval for a social worker. 13.35, substitutes and tutors of various substitute and tutors. 13.36 is travel expense form. 13.38 is personnel committee members, so that is not an agenda item. So I am seeking approval tonight for agenda items 13.02 through 13.29. And then 13.31 through 13.36.
Okay, so first things first, we need to, we need a motion to table item 13.30 just for further discussion and some collaboration with the Borough Program. So is there a motion to table 13.30?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Caden.
Yes. And now do we have a motion to approve items 13.02 to 13.29 and 13.31 to 13.36?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk were abstained.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to section 14, Policies and Regulations Committee. Ms. Severino?
The Policy and Regulations Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policies and regulations. There are no first reads tonight. The second reads are all of the policies that were discussed last month. So we have the 1.43.2, the high school student reps to the Board of Ed, who we met tonight. 1.6, sorry, 163 quorum, that was revised. 1511, Board of Ed website accessibility. 2415, every student succeeds. 3216 is dress and grooming, that is for teaching staff. And 3270, professional responsibilities. 4216, dress and grooming is for support staff. 5513, care of school property. 5517, school district issued student ID cards. And 5722, which is the student journalism policy. Oh, sorry.
That's right.
And there are, oh, there is a regulation, sorry, the regulation, it's the same as the policy. 5513, which is the care of school property. So seeking approval for items 1403 and 1404.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second? Questions or comments from board members?
I do have a question, following up from the last board meeting about the website accessibility policy. Was there any clarification about whether or not the policies had to be posted in HTML form versus just PDFs?
I think it has to be done both ways, HTML and PDF, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Item, or, next, we're up to 15 miscellaneous. There is no previous month's HIB report because we were not in school last month. 1502 are three job descriptions for some jobs in the Board Office. The Executive Administrative Assistant, Human Resource Specialist, and Board Office Administration Assistant, District Registar. To be clear, these are, these are descriptions for these jobs that have not been in, that the descriptions have not been in place before. So just to clarify roles, there is no new hiring of any of these people. These people have already been working in the Board Office, but now they have a clearer description of their job expectations. So that is 15.02. We just need approval, excuse me, for that one item, 15.02. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Questions or comments from board members?
I have a comment. On the job description of the Executive Administrative Assistant under Performance Responsibilities of Oakland, Collingwood and Oakland, number one. It says work directly with the superintendent to support all aspects of his daily work routine. I think we should make it gender neutral if this is going forward. There.
So their request is to make the job descriptions gender neutral? Which is, is there, we can still approve them?
It's a quick, it's a quick fix.
That's the only place I noticed.
It's like a quick, right, like that's, there's no problem with that, right?
It's a quick fix.
Yeah, okay. Thank, good catch, Chris. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
And Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Before we move on to section 16, which is our second opportunity for public participation, we did want to take a minute to address the incident on Friday at the football game. Dr. McDowell, I'm going to turn it over to you because you were dealing more closely with all of it, but we felt that it was an important thing to not let the meeting go without discussing.
So first, would like to publicly thank our athletic department, our site-based leaders for athletics, faculty and staff who were working at the game, in addition to our law enforcement partners with the Collingswood Police Department. This past Friday, while we were playing a home game versus Mastery Charter, there were several attendees that approached one of the police officers in uniform and shared that there were rumblings and they had came into the know of a potential violent incident that was scheduled to take place at the high school campus. The police officer immediately went to the administration. The individuals who reported this went, as they were exiting the space, went to a second police officer and shared the same thing. So by that time, the second report, they were already congregating and they were together. In partnership with local law enforcement, the administrative onsite team made the decision that erring on the side of caution because there, we did not know the, whether or not the threat was credible. But in those cases, we are always going to err on the fact that everything is credible until proven not. So the decision was made in order to begin evacuating the space. We wanted to make sure that all of the individuals in attendance, it was roughly 850 people. That was our main priority. This all started around 8:30-ish, give or take, 8:40. And what we were operating under the knowledge of is that whatever incident was scheduled to take place was scheduled to happen around nine o'clock. So we were under a very tight window. Once law enforcement is apprised and things have been reported to our police partners, they are in charge until they have cleared the area. So we worked in tandem with our law enforcement partners to be able to successfully clear out the stadium. We also took it a step further by creating an exit strategy, which had spectators going out on one side, which had our students, our student athletes, our cheerleaders, our band members going out on another side, because some of our students needed to go back into the building. So we took the students to a safe location within the building while the police who were onsite, it was roughly six officers, and they called for additional support, were clearing the space. Once the space was successfully cleared on campus, they also made sure there were no lingering individuals in Night Park, and they were able to successfully clear the facility and clear Night Park around 10:15. We are extremely thankful to the students who brought this to our attention. We are extremely thankful to Collingswood Police Department, our athletic team, our athletic leadership team, our security team, and because they, they took a very challenging situation, nobody wants to stop a game. The game had to unfortunately be stopped in the middle of the third quarter. The score was zero to zero. But those of us who are human beings, specifically those of us who are parents, there's no game worth the safety and security of either ourselves or our children. So they made the call. I was on the phone throughout the evening with the site-based team. I got my first call a little after 8:30, and they kept me in the loop while all of this was taking place. Upon reflection, one of the things in our after-action debrief this afternoon is we want to make sure that in the event that there are future incidents of concern, that there is a more timely notification within the community. So upon reflection, we will make sure that there are additional touchpoints and check-ins with the community so that rumor mills don't circulate throughout the evening.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell, and at the end of the day, we are glad that the, the system worked the way it should and that no one was hurt. On that, that note, we are moving to section 16, which is the second opportunity for public participation. Just as a quick reminder, this is for anything. Any public comment, not necessarily specifically on the agenda. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback. We will be actively listening and taking notes, and if appropriate, more information we'll got later in the week, or we will discuss at future board meetings. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less.
My name is Christine Roseborough, and I live at 203 Johnson Avenue in Oakland. I am deeply disturbed by the lack of action taken by the school administrators on Friday, 9/23/22, at the Collingswood versus Mastery football game. Students and spectators were advised by the announcer to evacuate the stands. The football team and coaches were still on the field, and the game was continuing to play. The head coach had to go over to a police officer who was calling him because the referee was asking what was going on. The police advised the coach there was a threat made that a shooting would occur at the football game at nine o'clock. At that time, neither the police nor school administrators, including the athletic director, escorted the players and coaches off the field. The players and coaches stood on the field for eight minutes. Eight minutes as potential shooting targets. Students and spectators were being herded like cattle out of one exit. Many parents and family members wouldn't leave because their sons were still left on the field. One of the coaches made a decision to remove the players and coaches off the field by exiting through the iron gates closest to the middle school. However, they had to unlock the padlock first before going to the locker room. At no time were the players and coaches escorted off the field by police. The safety of those players and students should have been number one priority, not last. They were the most vulnerable. How do you announce that the football game won't resume until the stands are cleared since you already know there has been a threat of a shooting at the game? Thank goodness, no one was injured or killed. However, I hope this is a wake-up call on what not to do in the future and throw out whatever critical incident threat plan, or as you call it, emergency preparedness training may have had, and start over. As a proud parent of one of the student athletes at the school, I am not asking but demanding that the school administrators be held accountable and fired for putting our children's safety at risk. Dr. McDowell, anyone who was at the game and read your safety update email knows the real story, and trust me, so will the Department of Education in New Jersey. If you don't think a threat can be credible, look at what happened today in Rockspire High School at 4:30 in the afternoon, when two gunmen ambushed five football players coming off the field at scrimmage. One was shot dead, three shot, and another one was injured. So don't think for one second that things can't happen in a small town like Collingswood. Thank you.
Hello. My name is May Kramer. I live at 9 West Narbuth Terrace in Collingswood. Very broad, sweeping, sort of general comment after a very important and emotional comment, so just kind of stating that. I wanted to implore the board now, at the beginning of the school year, before time gets away from us or from the district, to consider serious allocation of internal resources towards communications and communication planning, considering especially audiences, district audiences, different audiences, sequencing and targeted messaging. With the most appreciation for all of you as both elected and volunteer positions, I watched last year as communication gaps were created and created what I would definitely consider chaos for many initiatives and priorities that were super important. And I believe that a lot of grace was given, given it was COVID, and that that was completely challenging for everyone. And it still is. But I also believe that that grace is dwindling in terms of just judging by social interactions, media, social media interactions, communications that I'm part of, being actively involved in Sharp and Newbie PTA and school communities, that that grace seems to be dwindling. And again, I'm sharing this with full support. As a member of the board on Newbie's PTA and actively involved in Sharp School, very engaged with the school community, with both educators and admin, as well as with the parent communities across the schools, I'm very tapped in. And, and I know you are all tapped in as well. So just considering social media in Collingswood, we have the mommy group, and we have the parent group, and we have Collingswood Into the Wood, and all of these groups, and then each school obviously has their own internal communication channels via social media, which consist of not only broad sweeping, Newbie PTA, but first grade, second grade, third. And within those, certain messages that are major priorities for this year create chaos for the board and for decision-making and communications as a whole, that I feel like we need to really work as a school community and a board to tamp down. So examples, the violence threat on Friday that, that the person before me spoke so passionately about has impacted the community, as you all know. And to have that spoken as the last item of, on the agenda, when I feel many parents came probably to hear it first, is, is a challenge. It leaves behind a rumor mill, it leaves behind chaos. I personally didn't receive, very well could have missed, the, the district communication, or maybe because I don't have a high school student, I'm not sure. But I don't feel that all the channels are cascading into all of the district schools and school communities. Throughout this meeting, about 90 minutes of duration, I was getting multiple texts from school community members asking if the school violence threat from Friday was on the agenda and if it was covered yet, and, and for folks asking for the live YouTube link. Another aspect of a communication gap creating chaos that I witnessed on back-to-school night, the potential, and I'm not clear on this, elimination of a LEAP or Gifted and Talented program has been making waves throughout the community, is very visible on social media. There is a lot of speaking on behalf of the board in terms of decision-making by non-board members, as would happen if communication gaps occur. And so I know for a fact that in back-to-school night, for both children, that this was, topic was bridged, and the teachers could not speak clearly, and not to their fault at all, on what was in store for this program. And that created, again, multiple texts and messages on social media channels that presented a gap and, and just disparaging messaging for the board itself. Right? So just something to pay attention to. Dress code, huge win for me personally. I had a problem with the way that it was framed, fought for feedback to get through to the board, appreciate anything that did come of that, had no idea that there was any change in place. We should celebrate wins, right? That that was not something that, I don't think communications are reaching all of the channels again. Chromebooks, the opportunity to mitigate so that it's not a complaint forum here, that it is something that is handled and addressed in advance, because the only communications I've seen related as a non-middle school person have been on social media. But there are so many that I'm now involved as an elementary parent. Budgeting season starts in October. Do we feel confident that admin and stakeholders are fully informed, fully aware? Have they all been cross-trained in the zero-based budgeting? Last year was a huge point of contention. I know that there's training sessions set up. My hope is that it is better this year, but to avoid future problems, something to get ahead of. And I think the big challenge for me is coming into the board meetings actively now, committed and super-engaged monthly, very little of this, if any, has been printed on that public agenda. Right? And so you're getting community members that are confused coming in and really want to know what is happening and are waiting until public comment to really address. So maybe some proactive thinking about the agenda. I think just, again, the clearest communication gaps are significant and creating chaos, and I just want to see success for the board and elected and volunteer positions. I know you're all working really hard, and so just some feedback on that, and really appreciate you listening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Claire Tracy, and I live at 617 Leeds Avenue. I'm going to piggyback off what May chose to touch on tonight. I am also on the board of the ZAME PTA. I shared this because I would think I would have some additional information about the changes going on in our elementary schools. And when I ask questions and I get no answers, And when I ask questions and I get no answers repeatedly from our principal and the teacher who was prior in charge of the Gifted and Talented Program for months, I come here tonight to get some answers. So as mentioned, I have a child in LEAP. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's a pull-out accelerated learning program, which allowed for a space for many students to come out of their shells and be themselves in a small group setting. It was the one period a week my son was able to participate. In this school, sorry, it was the one period a week my son was able to participate in accelerated learning experience, fueled his passion for school, and inspired him to get excited about learning in a way I've never seen. Absent from the LEAP program, our elementary schools afford no specialized instruction to teach, to students who are capable of learning at an accelerated rate. We have no after-school programs or clubs or in-school opportunities to give them extra challenges that these students need. I've spoken to educators, and I've heard great things about the MTSS model, which I only discovered was being implemented by reading the June board docs, which mentioned five teachers' names being transferred from their prior roles into MTSS leads. So as I mentioned, could be a great thing. However, I've also learned that there are many factors and components that go into this model being successful, including student voice and community voice. I've also learned that core instruction should be differentiated for all learners, including gifted students. What concerns me the most is that there has been very little to known information about the MTSS model shared with our Collingswood Elementary families. We only know that the change has occurred because of reading through documents, buried very deep. Building administrators and teachers have given no guidance this year, and we are now basically in October, as to what teacher, if any, will be in charge of this gifted and talented program. The point person in our district for GNT, Dr. Principato, has shared she'll be attending workshops this year about gifted and talented topics. However, as we enter October, there is still no game plan, which makes parents of gifted and talented students feel that their children's needs are very, very low priority in this district. My ask is that we minimally continue to pull out sessions for GNT students until the MTSS model is fully rolled out and our elementary school classes are fully operating effectively in the various tiers that are associated with this model. This would include four periods a week, and it seems very doable. I'd also ask that going forward, we really make it a priority to include parents and students in conversations where major changes are occurring, and to put a process in place that guarantees that this happens. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Should I do this, or? Jeff Demasi, 1001 Park Avenue in Collingswood. I'm also here to speak about the LEAP program. Well, first of all, I just want to say a great idea about the, looking at the robes for NHS. I always thought that was very alienating when I was at graduation. Also, probably should look at the award ceremony. I didn't, I don't like having the top 20, even though my kid's in it, sitting in front of everyone, feels very, I don't know, weird to me. And probably we should be de-emphasizing class rank in general, because colleges don't care anymore, so why do we? But anyway, I'm talking about LEAP. So I'll just say that three kids in the district who have participated in LEAP, it's been a bright spot for them. It's really been a place where they have been able to come out of their shell, where they've been around other kids that care about academics in the same kind of way. I think everybody knows that those kind of places are important, and they're, you know, just like a athletic field is great for people to bond in different ways, that LEAP provides a different kind of experience for kids that need it. They're ready for it. We're not talking about, you know, geniuses. We're talking about kids that are ready for accelerated learning. We're talking about kids that get inspired. We're talking about kids that get engaged, and we're talking about kids that feel empowered through programs like this. I don't think, you know, I know we're not getting rid of LEAP in the district, obviously because it's a school, you know, it's a state mandate. So I mean, I'm only speaking on the specific experience that my kids have had in LEAP here, and one of the components was a pull-out aspect of it. Right now, that seems to be in question, whether or not it's going to happen. Could there be an amazing push-in program? I don't know. I'm open to that possibility, but right now, I feel like we're in a very difficult position with October right around the corner. The program's supposed to start, no clarity on what the program is going to be, and no clarity. And when, in talking to building administrators and talking to the former people who've run LEAP, they don't know where it's going to be yet either. So that is a huge concern to me. I'm very concerned about the communication around this, as previous speakers have said. There was no indication that LEAP was going to change at any point. When I heard a rumor that it might change back in May or something last year, or this year, sorry, reached out to the interim principal of Zane, he assured me there was no changes. There's been no discussion about changing LEAP. There's no changes of the teacher, there's no changing of anything. So I said, will you tell me if anything's going to change? He said, yes. As mentioned, the June board meeting, there was a change to people's positions. Reaching out to people, what does that change mean? What does it mean for LEAP? What does it mean for our schools? There's going to be no change. Don't worry about it, it's fine. It's not a problem. Don't worry about it, everything's going to be fine, is what we were told. So we're at this point where, as recently as Friday of this week, in talking to the principal of Zane, still no clarity to him about what the program is going to be. Not his fault, he's very interested in understanding what the program's going to be, but he hasn't received guidance. This is, in my mind, a major problem. This is a school, we're not trying to build the plane as we fly it. I think it's a little too late to not have a plan for something that should be happening over the next couple of weeks, starting in the next couple of weeks. I don't really understand why that's the case, or why are we trying to move so fast and change everything all at once? I'm all for change, but if we don't have a plan, I'd like to at least have the same kind of program that my kids have had over the last, you know, few years, and at least be able to deliver that with some clarity, and that's so that parents understand what's going on. I did also want to mention, I did, you know, we went through the whole process, we suggested, we talked to teachers, we talked to building administrators, we went to Dr. Principato. In every single step, we haven't been able to get clarity on the situation. As was mentioned, Dr. Principato said, I'm going to be attending some professional development throughout the year on this. That's great. I hope there is a lot to learn. I hope there is a way to evolve the program. But at this point, I think the idea of attending professional development during this year probably should affect next year's program, not this year's. It just seems like we've got to, the teachers have to prepare, they have to get curriculum ready, everyone has to be coordinated. So I'd ask you to consider communicating to the school community what's happening as soon as possible, so we know. I think one of the biggest problems is we really don't even have anything to react to. We don't know what the plan is. So I'm speaking based on, you know, rumors, you know, a little bit of information that's been able to be shared by Dr. Principato, the principal, et cetera. But we really need to know what it is so we can actually react to it. And honestly, I would prefer to have been included in the conversations before if we were going to make a major change to the program.
Good evening. My name's Nicole McKenna. I'm at 135 East Browning Road in Collingswood. I know that you've all seen me up here last year, had a lot of questions about the Gifted and Talented Program, especially quite a few times brought up the act that was passed in New Jersey in 2020 for the expansion of the Gifted and Talented Program, and asked how the curriculums were going to be changed to support that. And while I was hoping that something was being worked on, I too, like all these other people, were really shocked to learn that there was going to be no LEAP in my kids' elementary school. And I didn't find out until I went to back-to-school night and asked, told the LEAP teachers that I was really excited about the program this year. And the teacher told me that they were reassigned, and there was going to be no more pull-out LEAP classes. And now I feel like, instead of expanding on our Gifted and Talented Program, we're taking it away. I keep hearing this MTSS, I don't know what that is. I don't know if anybody here, it sounds to me like even the personnel being put into this program, they don't fully understand it. And I have to agree with the last gentleman who was up here. If you're going to implement a new program, then everyone should be educated on how that program's supposed to be run, so that when a concerned parent comes up to them and says, well, then what is our plan for our Gifted and Talented students at this school for this year? Their answer to us is an "I don't know." So I really hope to hear about this, and hopefully really soon, and before the next board meeting. Thank you.
If no one else is coming up for public comment, I was going to ask Ms. McPartland if she could give some background on the plans for LEAP this year. Thanks.
So I'm sorry I backed everybody, this is always so awkward, but let me just turn around. So a couple of highlights that I just wanted to mention regarding the program. Number one is that the rationale for making any revisions to our GNT program is a result of the fact that our LEAP and GNT program has been in existence for a very long time here, and that's going on at least 15 years. As a result of COVID, many of the changes to entry requirements need to take place. So over the course of several years, our entry requirements for GNT or LEAP have had to be revised because some of the assessment criteria we use in the past, in the past just wasn't even in existence. So we used to use NJSLA, that didn't happen anymore because of COVID. They implemented Start Strong, not exactly the most rewarding piece of material and assessment for the purpose of entry into the program. We also have several new programs in place this year, our Into Math program, as I mentioned earlier this evening, we no longer have Imagine Math, that was one of the benchmarks we were using for criteria. So there are many things that have been revised and changed that have caused us to revisit the criteria that's needed for entry into the program. We did this year hire an MTSS coach at each building. MTSS is Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, which supports all students in all levels in our buildings. We also have Learning Acceleration Specialists. These are the people who are formerly called Academic Enrichment, and they are working alongside the classroom teachers and the MTSS coaches in the development of any programs that meet the individual needs of students. We are currently in the process of finalizing revision to the current entry requirements to reflect our current programs. We are also going to be introducing the AllSAT-8, which is, which measures cognitive abilities relating to a student's academic success as another measure for entry into the program. This is one step forward in the identification of GNT that has now been in existence before. So in terms of what's next, we are finalizing the revision of entry age require, entry requirements, not age, it's a different category, and we will be sharing that with our board curriculum committee in October, and then with the district in this forum at our October meeting. And then Dr. Principato, as mentioned, is our new supervisor for GNT, so this is also a change this year. She is in the process of embarking on a full year of training to understand completely the revisions needed for our Gifted and Talented Program. As part of that process, there will be a parent advisory and teacher committee to discuss the future of the GNT program, including suggestions for curriculum revisions in the 2023-24 school year. So these are all things that are going on behind the scenes. They are going to be communicated at the board meeting. Some of the things that you should just be aware of are, we are looking into our Into Math Growth Measure Assessment. We haven't administered this assessment yet, so we are looking at the reporting to determine what the requirement would be in terms of that. We've had different levels of indicators in the past with Imagine Math, so we need to make sure that that language is clear. We are also making sure that we update our Fontaine Penal Benchmark Assessment, which is a previous criteria, making sure that that information is current, as well as the other criteria that I mentioned. So the introduction of the AllSAT-8 is probably the most significant change, along with the revision of programs we have currently in existence.
And so Ms. McPartland, what would be the best way for parents that would like more information about this to get it, and when should they expect to learn whether their student will be participating in LEAP this year?
Sure. So our timeline is, like I mentioned, finalizing the entry requirement for delivery to all of the committees of curriculum in October, and then a final decision in terms of the entry requirement, communicated to families, and approval of that typically takes place at the October meeting.
And so if families have questions about some of the things that you just explained right now, the best thing for them to do would be to email you and Dr. Principato to get more information about that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Could we ask, could we ask questions from the board?
I would say the board can ask questions, but we're not participating in a, in a back-and-forth session on this topic. I just wanted to, at the end of the meeting, since no one else had any questions, I wanted to provide the opportunity for a bit more information, and then if you have questions, you can email.
I can ask for one question.
Nope, you can email. No. Okay, please stop. Please stop. Sir, please stop. So first of all, if the board would like to ask any follow-up questions to what Ms. McPartland said, they can absolutely do that.
Thanks. For a point of clarity, there was, you said that we've been doing LEAP and/or Gifted and Talented for 15 years. There was never any consider, was there ever any consideration for getting rid of this program?
Absolutely not.
Okay. You understand, and explained to, that the criteria has been changed because of the different assessments that we need to look at. Will, in situat, will, do we know who's going to be leading these programs in the buildings? Yeah?
Yes. Our Learning Acceleration Specialists, formerly Academic Enrichment teachers, who did do that before, in tandem with the MTSS coaches, and we may capitalize on those resources for specific grade levels for this year, as we are phasing out what is in existence and development and the evolution of a new program moving into the 23-24 school year.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
When traditionally does LEAP start, or what's the date that it normally starts?
Typically in the month of October.
Okay, and so what you, so what is occurring this year would be in the month of November? Is that what you're saying?
No.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay. It will be same timeline. It will start in October, but the assessment that are taking place are actually beginning this week and rolling into October, including that of the AllSAT-8.
So there's going to be a rollout of the assessments?
Correct.
Then those assessments will be analyzed and the criteria, okay, will be evaluated? And then families will get that notification when-ish?
In October.
In October, okay. And is the, is the criteria available for families to evaluate or to have access to in terms of a rubric or something like that? Has, I think, I think that had been discussed before, has, I just didn't know where we were at with that. I'm sorry, I'm high school, so.
So in previous years, there was a checklist that was used to kind of outline the criteria and in terms of the actual assessment results, that was what was used to determine whether or not a student was eligible or not.
And that, so that has been updated?
That will be updated in this process, yes.
And will that then be able to be found on the website for parents that are wanting to learn more about the process?
Yes.
And since, since it was brought up that there were some changes in location for how this, this program will be implemented?
Yes.
LEAP program is still happening, but it will be happening as a push-in program within the classroom, is that correct?
So I just want to clarify that
Yeah.
LEAP in its original form was always small group instruction. In every building location, that does look different, and you know that we are at capacity in our facility, so that is always a challenge. So it has always been small group instruction with a teacher who leads that. In terms of location, that's just given where the, there is room and ability. So regardless of whether it's in the classroom, in the hallway, in another So regardless of whether it's in the classroom, in the hallway, in another classroom location, depending on the activity and what's going on, it is small group instruction.
Got it. So it even in the past in some schools, LEAP has has been a program where it has taken place within a classroom as opposed to a couple of the people that spoke, they their kids go to Zane and it's it was in a pullout situation. So it has varied at schools in the past and will continue to, or at this point will it be a push-in program?
I think that right now, if I think about where we are in our elementary schools in terms of capacity and what has changed, even in this last year alone, just doing our walkthroughs in the beginning of the school year and looking at our spaces, we are very limited. So we will continue to focus, like I said, on small group instruction. And given the content of the curriculum that's being initiated within the teacher and with the grade level, will really dictate where things take place.
Okay, so the teachers have been identified, the the benchmark or the assessments are beginning to take place. And the the location of where the instruction will take place may depend on spacing issues at each individual school, but it will continue to be small group instruction, just location may be different in different spots.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from board members?
Just to clarify, because I don't understand all the lingo, when you say small group, does that mean it could be within the same classroom with other kids who are not receiving the same instruction that the the LEAP kids are?
Yes, throughout the course of our school day at elementary level, we have many opportunities for small group instruction. So it happens within the literacy framework. It happens within the mathematics framework. So all of those things happen throughout the course of our day. So those models of small group instruction that take place, it's not something that really is a change.
Okay. Did you?
I was gonna say, like, just from my own personal experience.
Put your put your.
Sorry. Just my own personal experience with my kids, like, they've done both. They've had time where they've been pulled out, like at Tatum and went into the music room. And then, like, for my son, he would get, like, a binder to do, like, extra math work when because he would get done with math in, like, five minutes. And then, like, a couple of kids would have, like, a small group and an extra binder, and they would get more complicated math work done in small group in the math class. So it just really varied by activity and and I guess space limitations. But I I just know from my personal experience, my kids have had both small group in class and out of class at the same building a year apart, just depending.
Any other questions from board members?
I have a question, but it's not for you and not on this topic, so I don't want to go before anybody else who does.
Yeah, I have some questions about this topic.
Go ahead.
Just really start with acknowledging, I think, the comment from a member of public earlier about how a lot of these conversations are happening without being on the agenda. And I do think that it's helpful for us to have these conversations when we can, but it would be nice to have them have been able to put these on the agenda, you know, for record's sake. And I don't know a way around that, but just.
So before you get into your question, actually, that was my point.
That's her question.
And so can I just piggyback off of that part, please? Remind me what the cutoff is to put something on the agenda as an action item before a board meeting?
Well, yes, my question. I guess my question would be, what would be the like?
Well, that's my next.
Yeah, there's no action.
Right.
This is all just, this is.
That's kind of part of my point.
This is deliberative board and curriculum work that once it's final, it comes to the board. So I guess I just want a framework of what.
So here's my understanding. My understanding is that there is a cutoff for an action item. I just wanted to know what that was. To the Committee of the Whole and miscellaneous sections are meant for these things that are don't make it to the agenda because of time or because there there's no action or vote involved. And so is there a way in Committee of the Whole to summarize the key points of conversation that will happen before the board meeting so that there?
That's what I was going to suggest, yeah.
Okay. So that there is clarity on the fact that this obviously is on our radar. Of course, we talked about all of these topics. Of course, we're getting emails from Dr. McDowell and other people during the weekend and all of that good stuff. So we know the work going behind it, but people show up thinking we don't care or don't know. And so maybe that can help.
Well, I think, like, this this came up in parent involvement, too, not right? That that can't make it on the board meeting agenda. It happened today. We happen to have somebody who had answers here on site right now. The alternative is to wait a month, right? Because of legal issues and and actual coding in how we can have conversations. So we either wait a month or we answer some questions now. And then with the football stadium issue, it happened on Friday night and we had a holiday on Monday.
Right.
So to get things onto an agenda sometimes is time-consuming.
Correct. But today, we could have came in and maybe practice is that the day of meeting during Committee of the Whole, even if it's verbally, we give an overview of the topics that are going to be discussed since they didn't make it to the agenda or aren't appropriate on the agenda so that it isn't just like Committee of the Whole and only we know what we're talking about.
So I was thinking, because we do try to have, we try to have a plan, but then sometimes, as I said, this was the first one for Committee of the Whole, that the discussion wasn't COVID. So I was thinking that that would be a good idea to thank you, Doc, Ms. McPartland, you don't have to stand there anymore, to have under Committee of the Whole what our what our topic will be. However, that, I guess I would be concerned, I want to make sure that that doesn't tie us into if something else comes up and we'd like to talk about that, that we can't. I would imagine that we can do both. I mean, some of the things that were brought up under public comment kind of served the exact purpose that public comment is supposed to serve, which it is bringing issues to to the board to for us to be actively listening and thinking about, for more information to come out later based on on those concerns, and then also for for us to take action in further committee meetings, in possible other other meetings, and more information than to be disseminated is the word I was looking for, disseminated to to the public. So all of those processes were kind of working the way that they should have been for some of the topics. Could we have had on the agenda what our Committee of the Whole topic was ahead of time? I could communicate that to to Beth Ann, who who was making up that agenda before it goes live. I think that's a great idea because then people will come kind of knowing what we are going to be discussing with the understanding that as things come up, other things might get added to Committee of the Whole as well. And I did want to just acknowledge one other thing about the and unfortunately, I think most of those folks have have left, but that for for the woman that spoke about the the incident on Friday night, to be a parent of a football player and and not fully understand what was going on and not be able or be told that they couldn't leave with them would be a very, very scary thing. And, you know, my heart goes out to all of the the parents of the players and the the people on the field. That's a really horrible situation. As as Dr. McDowell said, they had a a meeting to talk about it today, and I have no doubt that they will be in constant communication about these sorts of issues that unfortunately are possibly likely to happen. Again, as she had just said about with Roxborough, that working with the police department to make sure that we have a solid plan for when these kinds of things do happen, because nobody wants to have that feeling when they're about where their kid might be. So on that note, it sounds like we have some good plans for for continuing to work on communication. It's it's an ongoing issue, and I don't think any of us are denying that that it that it is an issue and that it's not something that we can do better. It's it's a huge constituency and it's it's a lot of moving parts, and we have to just keep keep doing better. So on that note, do I have a motion to adjourn this evening?
I think Roger had other questions. I cut him off to elaborate.
Did you? I thought it was on the lines.
Well, so I just wanted to, I guess, put a request out there for a little bit more information. It doesn't have, I think it actually would be better if it were emailed or written about the Gifted and Talented Program plan. Understanding that Gifted and Talented programs are really difficult, I think, to run because someone is making a determination about the potential of your kid, right? And so the the figuring out the assessment and the cutoff of which kids get into what program is is very difficult and very serious a a task at hand. So I I definitely understand all the work that has to be done to revise the standards in which kids are selected or or admitted to these programs, right? That being said, I I guess I don't quite understand the timeline because what was presented was that those standards we presented to the board in October and then voted upon by the board in October, but assessments would be happening now through the beginning of October, and the program would be starting in October.
So the assessments are a normal function of every school year? So the the major difference is is that we have new curricular tools.
Right.
So the beginning of the year assessments, the diagnostic assessments, those are all things that happen regardless of what type of program the student will be in.
Correct.
So that that will will be unchanged.
Right.
What the board will be voting on is looking at the criteria around selection, authorizing that to be the criteria for selection so that specific students can begin receiving that level of service based on the new criteria. But the assessment portion is not just for Gifted and Talented students, it's going to happen for all students.
So then, but so then to clarify, the the Gifted and Talented Program will be starting then earliest in Oc in November because we we as a board will be voting on the the, I guess, standards in October?
October 24th is our is our meeting. So then that would mean it could begin late October.
You're correct. Realistically, services would launch in November, realistically.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add? I think that this idea or this term of selection that we're using should kind of be rethought of, that we assess, it's my understanding, that we assess all our students and determine their levels of current mastery and the goals that we're going to set for them. So it's not like an exclusive club that we're selecting anybody into. It's the common practice of assessing all our students and determining their level of mastery and then providing services. So I just think that's important to frame all of this as what's perceived as changes or actual changes are being made is that, you know, all our students are being assessed.
Yeah.
You're thank you, Fiona. So she's she's absolutely correct. So all students will be assessed. Families who meet the approved criteria will be contacted and a recommendation will will be made, and ultimately, families will have to decide whether or not they choose to participate based on that recommendation. So it's not that we're just picking specific children. There's a criteria, and for all children who meet that criteria, who want to participate in that program, will have an have an opportunity.
Right. I mean, you're I think what we're speaking about here is the 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 a very difficult issue of of Gifted and Talented programs and and what that criteria means for defining the the future success of kids, whether or not, you know, you're given that opportunity to be in the Gifted and Talented program or not. And, you know, I don't know what's what's on the table for the district in terms of how we want to make available those type of of programs. You know, but I I do hope that the ways in which we figure out how to offer those programs doesn't adversely cap the potential of kids who might not meet different assessment thresholds. That being said, I think that's, I think, part of the point of the multi-tiered system supports, right, is is that this is not, you know, the Gifted and Talented program is not some sequestered program or service that that is allowed for select a few people in a, you know, in a, you know, gleaming room somewhere else by themselves, but that students are given the supports they they need and and can make use of together in 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 kind of, I guess, the all their settings, right? And and so with that thought in mind, you know, I definitely do support the the multi-tiered system supports pushed by the district. And yeah, and look forward to seeing the the updated standards of for for the Gifted and Talented program.
So let me just provide a little bit of clarity because I want to make sure that we're not getting lost in the edge you speak, and it's very easy to to do that. When we think about what's our overarching district goal? So for Collingswood and Oakland, our overarching goal is to ensure that every single student has an opportunity to accelerate their learning. That looks different for every single child. So the reason why we have a multi-tiered system of support coaches is because instead of isolating and having that skill set with one or two individuals on campus, our goal is also to build the collective efficacy of all of our educators. What that means in layman's terms is how do you build the confidence and the capability to to ensure that every single one of your faculty and staff are the absolute best that they can be so that they can meet the needs of every single student? Our growth goals are for every child to grow a year and a half's worth of growth for a year's worth of input. That looks different for every child because we have a wide range of abilities. So our children who are on grade level still need to be accelerated a year and a half's worth of growth. Our children who are not on grade level, there is a multi-tiered system of support in order to to bring those students to be able to meet the standard. We have learning acceleration teachers to provide targeted, more personalized instruction to ensure that we're we're not picking and choosing who has an opportunity to be accelerated. Our GNT program are going to be for a tier of students who are ready, willing, and able to accelerate at a much faster pace. So instead of us doing what traditional school systems is, which is teaching to the middle, we're taking a more personalized approach and ensuring that no matter what the performance band of a student is, there's something for them with a year and a half's worth of growth, even for our students that are advanced, and not making excuses for our students who are not.
Right, right. And that's why I understand that the multi-tiered system of supports as 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 being and the philosophy behind it, right, is is, as you said, to to ensure that that type of individual individualization is provided in the most spaces during the school day as possible, not just within, you know, the one single period of of Gifted and Talented for a kid, but for, you know, all kids in that throughout the entire school day.
Do you want to say something?
I no, I was just gonna say, like, I mean, it just comes down to differentiation. Like, honestly, there's no Gifted and Talented, like, I don't even like the name of it because all of our kids are gifted in different ways and talented in different ways. What we're talking about is some children are ready to learn additional information in certain subjects that's beyond, so we want to provide that to them. And that's fine. It's just teaching kids from where they are to get to the next level regardless of where they are, right? I mean, a lot of these terms just make us as parents feel like better, you know? But the bottom line is the goal is to find out where a child is and provide them with the resources to grow and learn in a variety of different ways. And that kid might be ready for algebra and another kid might not be ready for algebra. So the kids that are ready for algebra, you want to give them algebra, and the kids that aren't ready for yet, you know, they're not there yet. That's okay. But at the end of the day, the goal of the district is to provide the resources for all the children where they are and help them in their path of learning.
And this discussion will be continued in our committee meetings and in the next board meeting. I imagine that Ms. McPartland may be presenting, ask for some more information for the community as well. Do I have a motion to adjourn this evening?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.